Good morning. We'll call the Wednesday, February 12th, to 2020 City Council meeting to order at this time.[16.02][16.02](APPLAUSE). And Councilman Westbrook?
Yes.
Do the invocation and then please join us with further pledge of allegiance.
Please stand and pray with me.
Yes.
Dear Heavenly Father, we are so grateful for all of the blessings that you bestow upon us in this wonderful community of Tyler, Texas, that we live in. We thank you for your life-giving reign. We thank you for all of the blessings that you give us as council as we bear the authority of government. Grant us the wisdom to make the very best decisions that we can for our community. We ask this and everything else in your name, Christ Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, we have the minutes to approve from December 11th, 2019.
Move to approve.
A motion from Westbrook, a second by Sellers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Onto R1.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. If you'll recall, this is an item that was previously brought before the council this past November. But just to quickly recap, we have a developer who's looking to develop the Rose Plaza Shopping Center. They performed a traffic study. It was determined that a traffic signal, as well as some other miscellaneous improvements to the driveways into the shopping center, as well as to Shelley Drive, were needed to accommodate that new development. When we brought this item to you this past November, we were, we had requested authorization to enter into an agreement with the developer to participate in the cost of this redevelopment of the traffic signal and the street improvements. At the time, the city's cost participation was being based on the engineer's estimate of the construction. Since that time, the developer has publicly bid the construction project. The two bids were received. The lowest bid came in substantially higher than the engineer's estimate. So, the numbers have been redistributed. The cost to the city is now $218,770.29, which is an $87,000 increase over the previous amount that council had approved for the city to participate in this past November. So, therefore, we've revised the agreements with the developer. We've also revised the agreement with Tech Dot that's required because this work is occurring in a Tech Dot right-of-way. So, at this time, we're requesting authorization to enter into these revised agreements with the developer and Tech Dot with the cost to the city of $218,770.29.
Can you get those numbers again, to what we thought it was going to be and what it actually is?
Yes. At, this past November, again, this was based on just the engineer's estimate, but the cost to the city was estimated at $131,790. The current cost is based on the actual bids that were received by the developer.
Tell me what is going to happen on Shelley?
Shelley is going to become a right-in, right-out-only turn. So, they're going to be building one of those little pork chop islands that's going to restrict the movement in and out of that driveway. So, people that are on Shelley Drive will no longer have the option of turning left across Broadway to travel north.
And that came after the recommendation of Tech Dot as we were working with them on the traffic signal for safety reasons. They had looked at that intersection for quite a while as a area of possible and of actual accidents because of just the amount of traffic that is flowing right there that is heading north and south and trying to take lefts from Shelley onto Broadway, or from Broadway, taking a left onto Shelley. And just with the amount of traffic and especially how that was stacking up as an issue. And so, Tech Dot brought that forward in this review.
And what's the scope of the work that we'll be participating in?
The work that the city is participating in the cost has to do with all of these modifications. The modification, it's Shelley Drive, so installing that pork chop, whatever restripping has to occur there, modifying the driveways into the Burger King lot, the three driveways into the Rose Plaza Shopping Center. There are some minor modifications to the driveway into the Wagner Cadillac dealership on the opposite side of road and some restripping there. So, the city would be paying for all of those costs while the developer is paying strictly for the cost of the installation of the signal itself.
Is the dealership participating in any way monetarily?
No.
The which one?
The car dealership.
Well, the dealership, that is, I know that the developer for the shopping center has been in discussions in having them, the dealership, participate in the traffic signal as for with their increased cost. I don't know that they've actually been able to work out a deal, but in conversations, they've said that, in their conversations with Wagner, that they have been amenable to participating financially with them, but it would be with, on the traffic signal.
And so, all the other dealer, are all the other businesses around there, there's no protest from any of them?
So, that's a large increase, right? From what we were discussing before?
It is. Again, the original cost was based on an estimate and the increase to the city is mainly due to the increase over the estimate in the concrete prices. We're having to do a lot of curb and gutter work and some sidewalk work and moving an existing bus stop location out of the way of one of these driveways. So, a lot of that concrete work was severely underestimated by the engineer originally.
Just seems like $488,000, an awful lot of money, but in the pie. And that other...
That's actually about, yeah, about half a million is...
That's a normal number.
For the traffic signal, yes. Because part of what you're also doing on Broadway, which is what our cost is going to, is what we refer to as possibly a scoring, where you're actually taking out the asphalt where the current markings are and then putting in new asphalt and new markings. One of the things Tech Dot was very clear on is they don't want to just essentially, you paint over the old markings and put on new markings because those old markings still come back up to the surface. So, it's strip out the asphalt that has the old markings on it, put in new asphalt and new markings.
So, I think what I've learned over the last 10 years, and I feel very confident about stating this, it's probably a little controversial, but I'll state it anyway, is that we have so many small business companies that are homegrown, that are up and down the Broadway corridor. What I've learned is that if we begin to do some of the large Tech Dot plans or dreams of doing overpasses at like the Loop and Broadway and other locations down Broadway, that we are going to begin losing, we could lose 25, 30, 40% of the small businesses that have been built up in this community. So, the actual concept of trying to do, move traffic at a rapid rate, especially during the holiday season, is going to be something that is going, probably not to occur. And rightly so, because it'll put a lot of our small businesses out of existence. The big, the larger we get as a community, obviously, the larger retailers that we have coming into town that would love to see a small business not be here. And so, I think that is, the actual light there does not bother me because of that. The actual work that Tech Dot is partnering with the MPO, the city and the county on, when we're widening Old Jacksonville Highway Paloxi and Run's Quarter as a relief route to our traditional retail quarter, I think those are very important and I'm glad that they're started and they're actually in the funding stage. So, I don't have a problem with that. The increase actually surprises me today and I would actually like to maybe look at capping the city part of the agreement to a level of $185,000, $200,000. So, in other words, when the cost overruns start coming in, that everyone knows that we're capped on what we're going to do. And then the other parties can figure out how they're going to divvy up the money. But I think we ought to make sure that we just kind of cap ourselves at a certain level.
The agreement is currently written that caps the city at that $218,000. It's very clear that the city will not pay any more than that amount.
Yeah, but we could do 200. We can modify that agreement.
If that was a change, could we not get the developer to participate at a greater level than, it looks like most of the increase was put on the city as opposed to the developer?
Well, yeah, I think they had some, but I think that's, we could just cap, cap everybody, cap the city at 200. And then y'all could go back and change the agreements if necessary.
Okay. Yes. And that's something where we can kind of bring that back to the developer to say that, if that's the council's action today, say at 200, and then, like you said, if they want to continue to try to, as far as for the redevelopment of the shopping center...
Right. But I think we ought to cap ours, because it looks like if we had that, we're going to have some more cost overruns coming into. So, we'll just cap ours at 2 and we're not going to split them at any percentage level or anything. So, we'll do that. Does that make you feel better?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Less money is always better.
Yeah. Do y'all want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we cap at 200,000.
And we approve R1, right? Okay. I have a motion to cap at 200.
Second.
Second by Councilman Warren. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. We'll move on to R2.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I want to start out by saying R2 and 3 are no match. No match by the city grant.
Yeah, okay. That's good. Thank you. To start out with that is better today.
This is a resolution that we would put in for a grant through the Texas Homeland Security Grant Division. The first one is for radios, so R2 is for radios. We asked for the same radios last year. They only gave us about $30,000. So, even though this grant says 100,000, there's only a little over $300,000 in the EdCog account every year to be divided up among 14 counties. So, it's recommended that the City Council adopt a resolution authorizing submission of the application by the Tyler Fire Department for an acceptance of grant funding through the Office of Texas Governor, Homeland Security Grant Division for the grant funding through the State Homeland Security Program as managed by the East Texas Council of Government to be used to support programs and projects aimed at maintaining and/or enhancing the city of Tyler's emergency preparedness and response capabilities.
Are we taking R2 and R3 at the same time?
No, sir. I believe they need to be done separately.
Okay. R2. Can I have a motion, please?
Move to approve R2.
Motion by Westbrook, a second by McGee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. R3?
Yes, sir. And we know that these funds will also compete against one another, but we're still putting in for both of them. This is to equip our newly-approved EOD team that we hope to have approved by the FBI in December. We do have training going on for three of our members going to Huntsville, Alabama in August. They'll be, they're going for a six-week program there to be trained up to be EOD technicians. So, this is asking for some equipment and trailers through that same EdCog grant, but this is on the other side of it. So, there's money for one side for fire departments and there's also money on the other side for like an EOD or law enforcement. So, that's what this other side is for.
Correct.
So, it's recommended that City Council adopt a resolution authorizing submission of the application by the Tyler Fire Department for an acceptance of grant funding through the Office of Texas Governor, Homeland Security Grant Division for the grant funding through the home, the State Homeland Security Program as managed by the East Texas Council of Government to be used to support programs and projects aimed at maintaining and/or enhancing the city of Tyler's emergency preparedness and response capability.
Move to approve R3.
Second.
Motion by Warren, second by Sellers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I think we should commend Chief Cobble for the very smooth opening of two fire stations in Tyler last week. Great job.[972.32][972.32](APPLAUSE).
Good morning, Steve.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning, Steve.
This is a proposed ordinance amendment to the, makes cleanup changes to the city board provisions in Chapter 1. These are pretty minor, but I did want to do a quick summary of them. One has to do with certain board eligibility requirements. Currently, there's language in there about delinquent taxes, assessments, things like that, suits against the city. These have been deemed to be invalid by the Secretary of State's office, so we're removing those provisions from the ordinance at this time. Also clarifies that city employees, as a general rule, cannot serve on the city board unless expressly authorized by city council. That is the current policy and is currently the general rule. We just wanted to say it in the ordinance because a question did come up on that recently. Another major change that I would mention has to do with the attendance requirements for the board members. Right now, the council has the discretion to take into consideration illnesses, extenuating circumstances for someone to continue serving on a board. What this does is, right now, that's just limited to the regular boards. This ordinance amendment expands your discretion to all city boards, no matter how often they meet, to where you can always take into consideration those factors. Lastly, this removes some unnecessary provisions. There's a reference to the medical control board, which is governed by contract rather than ordinance. The ordinance also references a board recognition process...[1099.08][1099.08](PHONE RINGS)
Very sorry.
The city already has a process for doing that, so it doesn't need to be set out in the ordinance itself. So, at this time, staff's recommending that the council adopt this ordinance amending Chapter 1 to update and clarify these regulations.
So, Steve, on the actual absentee of board members, that still, it's not any automatic removal. It's still at the discretion, right?
Yes, sir. That is correct. This actually expands your authority to take that into consideration.
Well, that's fine. But I mean, those are, those are always solved just by communication and visiting with someone.
Yes, sir.
So, we've never done that. I've never been a part of that and I wouldn't really be a part of that because we can just visit with someone and it normally all works itself out. So, okay. Any other questions, Stephen? A motion to approve by McKeller, second by McGee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. O2?
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
This is a request for the city council to consider adopting an ordinance amending Tyler City Code, Chapter 8, to change the hours of operations for public trails owned and operated by the city. Due to the popularity of our trails, when we changed the ordinance from sunset, I mean sunrise to sunset, we had a lot of concerned citizens that use the trails, particularly the bike clubs and parents that their children use the Rose Rodman Trail to get to and from school. Excuse me. So, the, we want to change the actual trails to be open, the public trails to be open from 5:00 AM till 10:00 PM. So, it is recommended that the city council adopt the attached ordinance amending Tyler City Code, Chapter 8, to change the hours of operation for public trails owned and operated by the city.
So, this is just trails?
This is just the trails, not the parks. Yes, sir?
And I think it's, I think it's just good caution. We have very low crime statistics in this community and we've proven that we can sustain those. However, when we make, when I make this vote, I'd like to say what I'd say privately to many people, is if you're going to be on a trail after dark, please have a buddy with you. Please, please just be cautious. We don't have reported instances, or not very many, I don't even know how many, but the police department does such an excellent job. But always please be careful when you're on a trail and you're anywhere after dark, just have a friend.
Yes, sir. And we did take this to Parks Board and they unanimously recommended the change. Yes, sir.
To approve, 02.
Second. Motion by Sellers, a second by McGee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Okay. Item M1 is a request to consider authorizing the award of a construction contract for the construction of the Golden Road Water Treatment Plant Filters 5 through 8 Rehabilitation and Caustic Feed System. In August of 2017, council awarded an engineering So, I'm sorry. We awarded a contract in 2017 to KSA engineers for the design of this project. The purpose is to replace the filter median underdrain systems for one bank of filters. That's, a bank is four filters, 5, 6, 7, and 8, as well as constructing a permanent caustic feed system. Then, in August of 2018, we approved a design amendment which added some minor chemical feed system improvements at the Lake Palestine Water Treatment Plant. Once the project was, the design was complete, staff elected to select a contractor using the competitive sealed proposal method. This is a method that allows us to take into account the qualifications of a contractor in addition to the price, which allows us to get the best value for this project. So, we advertised using that competitive sealed proposal process. We received two proposals. The proposals were evaluated independently by a selection committee. The selection committee consisted of four city staff members. So, each of the individual members evaluated each of the proposals independently, ranked each contractor independently according to the criteria. Then, the, each individual's ranking was averaged together to develop the overall ranking for each contractor. So, I don't know if you can read the slide. It's awfully, it's a lot of information. But this is just a very brief summary of how the ranking came out amongst the selection committee. So, we were ranking each contractor on six separate criteria, not just the proposed contract price, which equated to 40% of the overall total score, but we were also looking at the experience of the contractor with projects of similar size and nature to this particular project and particularly any projects that they've completed within the past five years. We were looking for the experience and references of the key personnel of that contractor, particularly that they were, the staff that they were planning to assign to this particular project, just generally looking at their company profile and general overall experience, the ability and commitment to respond to the city in a timely fashion in case something occurred during the course of the construction, and then looking at the safety and financial records of each contractor. So, going back up to the contract price, which again, 40% of the overall score, you can see that of the two contractors, Heritage Constructors submitted the lower price, 2.27 million versus 2.4 million from Graycon Construction. That's a difference of around $170,000. So, Heritage received the full 40 points for that criteria. Graycon received 35.9 points. That was calculated based on the percentage of the difference in their two submitted prices. The experience with the projects was 15% of the overall score. Heritage submitted 15 projects that they had completed within the past five years. Nine of those projects were related to water treatment plants, which again, that's similar to what we're looking for. The other projects that they submitted were related to wastewater treatment plants. Of the nine projects related to water treatment plants, those nine projects together totaled a value of $6.7 million, which tells me that each of those individual projects were less than $1 million in cost, which again, we're looking at a $2 to $2.5 million project. So, clearly, those projects were not that similar in size to the project we're looking at. On the other hand, Graycon submitted nine projects, eight of which were related to water treatment plants, one being related to a wastewater treatment plant. Graycon's eight projects totaled $47.1 million. So, clearly, they have experienced performing projects with much greater values than Heritage. Therefore, Graycon was awarded the full 15 points. Heritage's final score was 9.75 points. Again, you can see the experience. We're looking not just at the experience in general construction. We're looking that they have experience with this specific type of project.
So, okay. So, you're going to, you plan on going through all six of these?
I was, if you'd...
No. I mean, if you want to do that, I would be more than happy to serve on the actual committee. The, I mean, you said that we had four staff members on a committee?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if we need to do that, we can actually do our own investigation as well, if you're bringing that to us today. I mean, I think that, we used to have one outside professional that would serve on those committees to actually represent the public's point of view. I don't, we used to do that. We don't do that anymore?
We've never done that since...
You've never done it?
Have you ever been in before then?
Can I interject?
Sure, please.
You know, when I go through this scoring system, I struggle with it and to me, it's a challenge. And just take number two, for example. There's a scoring mechanism for work that's been completed within the last five years, which seems to be contradictory to what kind of experience does the company have. Heritage has 39 years' experience. Graycon has 43 years' experience. How many years of experience do you have to have before you become really qualified? I think 39 is sufficient. 43 is sufficient. You know, when you look at number two, the number of projects that have been done for the last five years, well, why don't we go back and say for the last 10 years? And if you look at... And if you look at Heritage's, if you look at the thing in Heritage's book, they've got 37 projects that they've done that are in the book. However, in the scoring mechanism, it says project about, project description is not included for projects related to water treatment plants. Well, here's 37 of them that are included in here. And then we get to personnel, project references for key personnel not provided. Here's a whole section in the book that they supplied on January the 3rd of their key personnel. So I struggle with the scoring mechanism. I struggle with the fact that, and I appreciate Heritage and Graycon both submitting bids, but if we're gonna, if our job is to save taxpayer money, here's 170,000 bucks. And to me, they're both qualified. I mean, why are we limiting, why are we just saying, show us what you've done for the last five years? Show us what you've done in the history of your company.
And I understand that viewpoint, but at some point, a project that was done 10 years ago doesn't necessarily tell me that there's still, that qualification isn't as relevant as something that was done last year or within the last couple of years.
These are, these are changing filters, correct?
Correct.
Have either one of these companies changed out filters before in a water treatment plant?
Graycon has.
And you're saying that Heritage has never done one?
I'm saying that within...
Do you know that?
Within the past five years, they were unable to demonstrate that they have experience doing a filter project of this size and magnitude.
Do they have a representative here?
Yes.
I'd like to call them up.
With Heritage?
Yeah, come, go fill out a card.
We can, yeah, we can get a card to fill out for them.
Okay, well, come on up. Come on up.
Lisa, where are these two companies located? Where is there?
Graycon is out of Mesquite. I'll be honest, I'm not entirely sure where Heritage is located out of.
Out of Texarkana.
Texarkana.
Come on up. State your name and who you are.
Carl Smith. I'm the president of Heritage Constructors.
Have you ever done a water filter before?
Yes, sir. Matter of fact, in our project history, we completed six or eight of them for the City of Texarkana in the last 10 years.
Did you, was there any problems on that contract?
No, sir. Matter of fact, we submitted letters of recommendation from the engineer and the city for those projects.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I want to know.
Lisa, I do have a question. Have either of these companies done business with the City of Tyler before?
Graycon has done multiple projects with the city. They are the contractor that's currently working at the Golden Road Plant, finishing out the backwash pump station.
Then I guess they should have done a lower bid. If they were already on site, I guess they should have done a lower bid.
That's the whole purpose of the bid process, is to get the best price.
It is. At the same time, we also, because of the assets we're talking about, want to make sure we protect the citizens insofar as asking the criteria on the contractors. Now, Council has the ability to, and that's the reason we presented to you this way, is you have the ability to select the contractor that you also want to go with. We do the processes, we give, go through, do evaluations, we have our technical staff do the review, but Council can modify this and go with contractor of choice as they so fit.
Right. But generally, if a contractor's on the site, they can actually do it for a lesser price, I'm assuming?
That would be something, I don't know if Graycon has a representative.
Did y'all have these people, did y'all offer the opportunity for these people to rebid as well?
We had the opportunity for, when Heritage brought forward the fact that they did not present some of the back material, as far as our, some of the material related to some of their past projects, we gave them the, both companies the opportunity.
Did either company submit a lower price?
No.
I just, I just struggle with it, you know? And Heritage has a total bonding capacity of $100 million. Well, you just, you don't gain that bonding capacity unless you're strong.
So Lisa, which one are you recommending?
Staff recommends the selection of Graycon.
I may not get a second on this, but I'm going to make a motion that we go with Heritage.
I'll second that.
All right. I have a motion from Warren and a second by Westbrook. Any other questions?
I'm not sure that I know enough to make a judgment, so I'm probably going to vote no on your motion for that reason.
Okay.
And we're going against staff recommendations, so I feel the same.
Okay. So we have a sec, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. I can go with Heritage.
Against?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we have four for, two against. The motion passes to go with the low bidder. Onto M2.
M2 is regarding the Fleschel Avenue Drainage Improvements Project. The project is complete. The road has been opened. This is merely a matter of finishing up the final paperwork. We have a reconciliation change order, which again, is just a reconciliation of the final quantities and amounts spent compared to the original contract. So you can see that the original contract amount was $999,134. We did in November approve an actual change order of $124,905, which increased the contract amount to $1.124 million. This reconciliation change order, by, once everything was all said and done, decreased that final contract amount by $8,300. So the final contract is $1,115,733.86. So we are requesting authorization to execute that reconciliation change order, as well as to release the final payment, including the retainage in the amount of $33,472.2 cents.
Do we have a motion to approve the longest project that ever took for the City of Tyler?
Move to approve M2.
We have a motion from McGee, a second by Warren. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. M3.
And again, this again is also a request to approve a reconciliation change order. This is for the TJ Austin Sidewalk Improvements Project. Again, the project is complete. The original contract was $330,889.75. The final contract was reduced by $38,301.80. So the final contract is $292,587.95. And then again, asking for approval to release the final payment to the contractor in the amount of $8,777.64.
Okay, good. I have a motion for one of the coolest projects.
Yes.
Okay. Motion by McKeller, a second by...
I do have a question before you...
Sure.
So now, the, since this project came in under budget, so where did those funds go? Are we able to keep those community block grant funds and utilize them on another project?
I'm going to let Ms. Wade answer. Yes.
That's my kind of answer.
Thank you for that link.
That's what I was looking for.
So I have, I have a motion by McKeller. Did anybody second? McGee's had the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. M4.
Thank you, Lisa.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, you have item M4 before you. You have a request that City Council consider authorizing the city manager to sign a letter of engagement for professional audit services with Provo Wilhelm &amp; Company, local firm here in town, for a fiscal year 1920 annual audit. Our city charter requires that we perform an annual audit every year. And in August of 2019, we advertise to, for these services. And then on September the 24th, 2019, we had four firms that submitted proposals. And then along in December, we went to the Audit Committee with the proposals, and after careful consideration, the Audit Committee decided to award this engagement to Provo Wilhelm &amp; Company, or make a recommendation for you all to award this service. For the 1920 audit, the maximum fee will be 97.5. That includes airport facility charge audit, REAC, which is a housing audit that we do as well. This engagement will be for a total of five years, and it will not exceed 505, 600, $505,000 The current City of Tyler policy mandates that we rotate these services every five years. It is proposed in this engagement that our interim field work will begin in September of 2020, and the report will be issued no later than March 31st, 2021. So it is a recommendation that City Council authorize the city manager to sign this letter of engagement for professional audit services not to exceed $97,500.
Move to approve M4.
Second.
Motion by Westbrook, second by Sellers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
M5.
M5 is the request that the City Council authorize the city manager to award Rivers Recycling as the primary vendor for the annual price agreement for a material recovery facility, which is called a MRF, to accept single stream recycling from the City of Tyler as per bid 20-009. And we opened bids January 14th. Rivers Recycling was the only bid received. Their new price that they submitted was $65 per ton, and the previous rate was $20 per ton. And the big question is, $65 per ton reasonable? So I called MRF in Dallas and Shreveport to inquire about the tipping fees. And FCC and Pratt, which are two big MRFs, they range between $70 and $95 a ton. And I wondered about that range, but the range is because some of them accept glass and some of them do plastics three through six, which increase the cost. Of course, in our bid, Rivers does not accept glass at all, but they do take three through six, which was included in our bid. Here's a picture, just so we have an idea. Our trucks, they run the route. When they get full, they drive to Rivers and they dump, you know, it's cardboard, paper, it's just a mixture. And they use a piece of equipment to load that from the floor to the conveyor line. So there's employees that are sorting that material. Here, I got pictures from our recycle center. So it goes from the pile we saw, and this is what they have to have it build and sorted so that manufacturers can actually use it. So that's labor intensive. That one was mixed paper. This one is plastics and cardboard. And also, of course, everybody's heard China's banned on recycled materials. China was accepting millions of tons of recycled material. And when they started banning it, it greatly affected the market rate for recycled materials. So in '16 and '17, before the ban, we were getting $120 is what manufacturers were paying. So here, that's about three and a half tons, so that's over $400 right here in that picture. In 2020, it's $30 a ton. So that's a little over $100 in that picture. And what that means is people like our recycle center, Rivers, were not getting as much from manufacturers for the product. That's the real reason that the cost is having to go up to pay for their operating expenses. So what the $65 tipping fee to our curbside customers? The current rate is 5.35, and with the increase, it would go to 5.96. And here's a breakdown, just a real simple calculation. We have our revenue up at the top, which is our customers, right at 4264 is the number of recycled customers. The revenue coming in is 280,000. And we just have a simple calculation, two driver salaries, the fuel, the maintenance, the tipping fee, the truck replacement, the cost comes to 310. So the difference is $30,000. So we calculate 61 cents. Basically, we take that 30 and we divide it by the number of customers, and that's how we came up with the 61 cent rate increase to cover the additional cost. This is just some other rates that we have. Currently at the landfill, it's $32 per ton with a $10 access fee. City of Tyler currently pays 5.51 per cubic yard, plus fees, which are usually about 30 cents. Our current residential collection rate for twice a week service is 16.70. And of course, the downtown recycle center for residents and non-residents, we accept recycled materials at no cost. The timeline that we were looking at, today we were presenting the MRF bid. Next council meeting would be to present the ordinance if everything's approved. Once approved, we would send letters notifying every customer of the changes, and of course, in April, the new billing rate would roll out. With that said, it's recommended that City Council authorize the city manager to award Rivers Recycling as the primary vendor for the annual price agreement for a material recovery facility, a MRF, to accept single stream recycling from City of Tyler.
And you did say they were the only bid, right?
Correct.
Yes.
And they're the only vendor that we could look toward?
They, when it comes to it, we like to look within a 40-mile radius. So they are the only MRF in East Texas. The next closest would be Dallas or Shreveport, and pretty much at those same rates, having to drive that distance?
Right.
It would just become a big deal.
Right. Makes sense.
Well, I expected a much larger rate increase each month, so I'm pleased to see that it's going to be a minimal impact and we'll still be able to provide the service.
And how long, how long is the contract?
Okay. The contract is 12 months.
Okay.
But it has five additional one-year extensions.
Correct.
The deal is, we're just hoping the recycle market stabilizes.
Right.
Over the last few years, it's continually been declining, and the costs have been continually rising.
Right.
So could we have an increase within that five years, possibly?
So what usually happens, they'll usually hold it at least 12 months unless something drastic happens. But after that 12 months, we usually reach out to them, everything's still good, and what they'll usually do is they'll let us know, we absolutely cannot continue it at this rate. So usually after that 12 months, they'll let us know if there's going to be a problem, you're going to need to rebid. They'll usually let us know.
Hopefully, that market will change. I mean, because of recycling, and I pay the fee.
Second.
A motion from McKeller, a second from Westbrook. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have, thank you, Leroy. Yes.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
This is a request that the City Council authorize the city manager to sign the Encore Streetlight Painting Agreement to continue the beautification efforts of downtown. Recent organizational reconstruction has resulted into a wonderful partnership with the City of Tyler Main Street Program and the nonprofit Heart of Tyler that's dedicated solely to downtown. Part of that, we have a strong and a goal-oriented relationship, and part of that goal that we have started is to beautify downtown. And the Heart of Tyler has stepped up to accept this project of actually painting a... this project of actually painting 80 light poles in the downtown area. They've actually started with some other projects they did. If you've noticed, they have painted some of the fire hydrants in the downtown area and some handrails, part of the big event that happened last year. And with this, the 80 poles, Harder Tyler is taking on the responsibility of the full payment of $100 per pole. And we'd be hiring, excuse me, Harder Tyler would be hiring a longtime downtown developer and trusted colleague, the O'Sullivan's. They have been around for about 30 years, doing wonderful work in downtown, and we fully trust them with this project. They will take on all liability insurance with it and working heavily with Encore to make sure that the specifications with the paint, removing the right brackets, and also putting up new banners for some of them that have been faded. So get a full makeover there. And part of that program, Harder Tyler has done some wonderful things with us as well, of also giving over $10,000 each calendar year for our downtown revitalization project. And just recently, at their annual meeting, they were able to give $1,000 to their downtown partners. And City of Tyler, multiple of our organizations were part of that. So we, they're actually here, they are, Carleen Dark, the president of Harder Tyler is here, and some of the board members, John O'Sullivan is here. And we really like to take this opportunity in front of city council to thank them for their wonderful work and their dedication to downtown. So thank y'all so much, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So this request for the Encore agreement is a very standard agreement. Basically, why we're asking the city manager to sign this is that the city is the Lisi for the light poles. But again, this is no liability nor monetary commitment from the city. This was entirely on Harder Tyler.
You know, Amber, I had the privilege of attending that meeting last week. And Carleen, you and John, your love for downtown is evident. And I can't even see John.
He's right there.
So John, are you gonna paint, are you gonna paint these yourself?
Oh, no.
Anyway, I, I appreciate you two very much. I want to move to approve M6.
A motion by Warren, a second by McGee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you all very much.
Wonderful, thank you.
M7. I said M7, am I right?
She's here.
Yeah. Oh, I, I looked down and I didn't see her. You didn't see anybody? I'm like, did I see that? Or I was just thinking I said that.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
This is a request that the city council consider authorizing funds approved by the Half-Cent Sales Tax Board for Winners Park in the amount of $41,000 to authorize CT Branding Corporation to begin design work for the park. So some, some of y'all may know this park as Peach Park because it's located at 910 South Peach Avenue. We actually did a ranking system about five years ago, and this park is definitely in need of some rehabilitation. So we're looking forward to the construction plans for this park. It is recommended that-
Do you need some water? You doing okay?
No, I'm, I've been sick. I'm getting better, I promise.
No, but I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I've had bronchitis, I'm good. It is recommended that the Tyler City Council authorize funds for approved, approved by the Half-Cent Board for Winners Park in the amount of $41,000 and to authorize CT Branding Corporation to begin design work for the park.
Awesome. Great.
Yes, very, I'm looking very forward to this project. Russ and I had a chance to, to drive this, well, he drove me to the park, but he made me walk the rest of it. And, but this is an awesome, it's amazing park, and I think this project is gonna be really, really great for the neighborhood and the community, so.
Yes, sir. And I like the fact that it's named after one of our longtime educators in the Tyler industry.
Yes.
So that's a motion?
Yes, move to approve M7.
And that's a second?
Yes, sir, that'll be great.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
So now we're on the consent agenda, and I've been requested to pull CA2 and CA5. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So if, if we have a motion for the consent agenda, it will be minus CA2 and CA5.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
A motion by Westbrook.
Second.
Second by Broderick. And we'll, he will allow the motion to be amended to as presented, minus CA2 and minus CA5.
Exactly.
Is that okay?
That's it.
Great. So yes, you gave that look.
Did I get the look? I didn't notice I got the look.
Yeah, no, no.
Sorry, Counsel.
I looked over when you were doing it, I got the look. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So city managers report, and then adjournment.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Council, a few items of note. One is just with the weather today. Please make sure you and your constituents are aware that we are experiencing flooding as just during this meeting, we've gotten notes, notices of 69 South, just of, just south of Loop 49 has been closed due to flooding. We have parts of Grande, especially around the Old Grande and Holly Tree area. And then also the North Loop at Garden Valley is down to one lane because of flooding. And so this will be kind of, as we experience this throughout the day, police department is quite busy this morning, making sure that they're at all the different locations to help people kind of move and get around those areas where we're experiencing flooding. Also though, to just make sure that, to kind of help keep yourself aware and your constituents aware, we are pushing out quite a bit of information about the new change we're doing for the Smart 911 with the Rave Alert System. We make this switch as of February 17th, so for next week. And this one is sponsored through the East Texas Council of Governments and will replace the formerly used Code Red system that was used to push out alerts to our citizens. And so with this, it's actually very simple to do, to go on and you go to the link, the Rave Alert link, and create your Smart 911 account and profile so you can determine how much in Tyler, Smith County, other areas that you may want to follow. And then have that information then pushed out to you when there are things such as flooding alerts that are being pushed out in the community. And so we recommend that, and we were doing quite a bit of as far as promotional material, and we'll continue to. But we also want to make sure that you and your constituents are aware of that. You have before you, there are Half-Cent project updates, several different as far as just slides and presentations on where we are on several different of our Half-Cent projects. And then third, as Councilman Sellers, Councilman Sellers already kind of made mention of just how proud we are of how well Fire Station Number One and Number Four, those grand openings went. It's, it's difficult sometimes to make those kind of moves for our firefighters, and they did it just excellently of moving into the different stations, getting themselves set up, kind of finding all the little things still that we need to get fixed up. But then the community really came out and supported both of those fire station grand openings. And that was quite a bit of a celebration in and of itself. And so we thank you for your involvement in that. We thank Chief Kobel for his work on that. We thank our fire department for just their work in the transitioning into those and making that so seamless. And so with that, Mayor, I'm done.
Thank you very much. Intertend a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor? We are adjourned.